Yeah. Bachelor High School District 113 Regular Action Meeting on Tuesday, July 16th at seven o'clock. A roll call, please.
Mr. Baraga.
Dr. Elliot Schremer.
Here.
Mr. Heineman.
Here.
Ms. Lupo.
Here.
Mr. Neder.
Sure.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes, please.
Newman.
Here.
I'd like everyone else who's present to identify themselves.
We know Chance, the negative secretary.
Tom Krieger, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Lisa Delaco, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Karen Warner, Chief Communications Officer.
Tiffany Rowe, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Brian Umer, Chief Operations Officer.
Ali Mahntis, and Super Finance.
Holly Fleischer, Principal Highland Park High School.
Ron Casbaum, Chief Information Officer.
Mira Anti, Assistant Superintendent of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Shayla Holland, Superintendent.
Fantastic. That's so exciting. Um, is there a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
No, moved.
Is there a second? All of those in favor?
Yes, please.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, board reports. My report is first. Uh, quickly on some housekeeping items, just wanted to go through our committee assignments for this coming year. For the finance chair, uh, Rick, uh, sorry. Greg will be the finance chair and members will be Rick and Jenny. Uh, facilities will be chaired by Rick and, uh, Greg and Dr. Jody will be, uh, members. DEI will be chaired by Dr. Jody and the members will be Jaime and Jody Shapiro. Policy will be, uh, chaired by Jaime and, uh, Dr. Jody and myself will both be members. The True North rep will be Jenny. Uh, I will serve as the HR liaison. The Ed Red representative will be Rick and TIF liaison will be Rick as well. Um, as you'll note, uh, we differentiated representatives from liaisons with the thought that, um, the representative may have an opportunity to vote for us on an issue if they're sitting on an outside, uh, committee or group where liaison really is more connecting the dots and aware of what's happening and being able to share that information with our board. Are there any questions about the committee assignments? Great. If we could also make sure the, uh, website gets updated, that would be wonderful. Thank you. The other housekeeping item is, uh, making sure that you all have eight nineteen on your calendars for our ISB self-evaluation workshop. Uh, right now I'm asking you to hold five until nine, but we will only be using two hours. Dr. Holland and I are meeting with our liaison next, soon. Um, and we will figure out what that two-hour window is. Okay? All right. And then from a report perspective, I did want to give a brief update on the North Trail Stormwater Intergovernment Agreement, the IGA, between the village of Deerfield and District 113. In our discussions drafting the IGA to get work done on this stormwater system, both parties have been focused on ensuring an equitable division of resources, money, time, and manpower, to improve the configuration and functionality of this shared storm system, as well as adequately provide for its future maintenance and long-term upkeep. I personally appreciate, uh, Mayor Shapiro and the hours he has spent discussing this agreement with me. A strong working relationship between the district, village, and our boards is more important than any one project. Tonight, I am recommending that we pause our efforts on drafting and negotiating the North Trail Stormwater IGA. I believe that this pause and reset, um, we can reengage down the road and finalize a mutually beneficial agreement. Okay? Any questions regarding that? Fantastic. Um, and the other part of my report is I am so, I'm excited to see everyone that's been around this table for a very long time. I'm also super excited to welcome our new members. Uh, so thank you and welcome. And that's my report. I think next up is Ed Redd.
Great, thank you. Um, I attended the Ed Redd and Lake County Regional Office of Education Mini Summit on June 12th, 2024. Ed Redd's mission is to provide research, education, development, that's what the REDD stands for, to members. Uh, they've been directing those activities towards understanding proposed legislative actions and developing recommendations themselves. Most of the work is geared towards lobbying utilizing Ed Redd staff and member actions. This is the first time a meeting focused on education development. Um, it was an effort that included resources from Ed Redd and the Regional Officer of Ed, Office of Education. The program was well-attended and included board members and administrators from across the area. I found it to be useful both learning and networking. District staff and board members should review the en- uh, agenda the next time they do a program like this and attend sessions that they think are interested in. I attended two sessions, TIF and Engaging the Community and Superintendent Survival Guide, Asking Your Community for Funding at the Battle Box. Thrilling.
We appreciate the fact that you love that, so. It is very.
That's what makes you, you.
In the TIF discussion where our TIF lawyer was actually on the panel.
Oh, interesting.
Uh, it was identified that school districts had no hard power in the design of a TIF. Influence is the key to getting a favorable result. Once a municipality has hired a consultant and has a propos- proposal to review, it is too late to make significant changes. This means that we need to have a strong relationship with the municipalities, so when they first start to consider a TIF, they ask us for, to be involved in the design. Okay? In the session on referendums, the focus is on having relationships with influential residents and knowing what the community thinks. The next Ed Redd event is a legislative breakfast on, uh, August 12th. Um, and the focus will be on state legislation that, uh, impacts schools. We currently get our information from lawyers, but this is a much more detailed view with ideas on how we can influence the outcome.
Fantastic. Um, Rick, if you would also, I'm trying to get better now at reading those emails, so, um, but will you make sure that when there is another education session, that you definitely bring it to our attention so that we can look at some of the sessions? Great. Um, and then True North, Jenny?
Yes, I attended my first True North meeting also on June 12th. Um, the meeting opened with a really lovely event where the Deerfield Optimist Club rewarded and recognized nine students for their, uh, essays that they had written. And what was notable about these students was a lot of them had gone from struggling to construct sentences to writing seven-paragraph essays by the end of the year. So it's great to have a lot of their families there and have the students come up and be recognized. It was a really lovely start at my first meeting. Um, also speaking was the Highland Park Highwood Disability Inclusion Working Group. My understanding is that this is a new working group that has taken quite a long time to get together. Now they have the working group and they're very excited about starting the actual work. And they're working towards advocacy and a high quality of life experience for disabled people in our community. Um, one of the things that did come up for discussion was that Glenview School District is intending to withdraw from the co-op.
Was it thirty-one, twenty-four?
Thirty-four, thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thank you.
Um, the reason why this is of note is this would be the first time that someone has withdrawn from the co-op and so there's no game plan for how this will occur. Um, because of that, this will be a process that takes quite some time, so it'll probably be about a year before anything will come to us that we would have to discuss and potentially vote on. So this is a thing that's going to be a discussion point for most of this year. Um, it doesn't seem to be acrimonious, it's just that Glenview is not using any of the resources from True North and feels that they're providing that service to their students through their own district. Um, and then the last thing was that the budget for the financial year of 2025 was approved, so, um, it was a great introduction. I look forward to learning more. There's some training coming up in August that I'll be attending for new members with Dr. Holland as well, I'm sure. Um, so yes, I'm happy to be starting the job doing that, so.
Thank you very much. Because we want to make sure that we have a voice on that board, so thank you.
Very important.
Taking that.
Yeah.
All right. Your first superintendent report, Dr. Holland.
So as I've officially launched into the district on July 1st, I have been surrounded by an amazing team, passionate staff members, and a very committed and involved board. I will be spending the year, but more specifically the first ninety days on the job, meeting with stakeholders across our school communities with intent to learn as much as possible about the state of our district and what various stakeholders prioritize. Consider this a time for me to listen, learn, and to launch. While there is much work to be done and a lot of matters that will also receive my immediate attention and support, I will simult- simultaneously be meeting with representative stakeholders and reviewing and studying as much district information as possible that provides insight into the current state of our district. In November, I plan to share my learning insights and recommendations with the Board of Education. Thank you to everyone who has extended a very warm welcome, the gift of time and patience during my transition into the district. It's definitely go time and I'm inspired by the energy, excitement, and the hope that I felt literally in every interaction and opportunity to engage across our district. Now for other items. So I wanted to give an update on graduation for 2025 and 2026. Graduation ceremonies for Highland Park High School and Deerfield High Schools, High School, are confirmed to take place at Ravinia in May of 2025. Although Ravinia is engaging in a renovation project that will be underway at the time of graduation, it will not impact our use of the venue in 2025. The graduation dates are as follows. On May 28th, 2025, Highland Park High School will have their graduation. And on May 29th, 2025, Deerfield High School will have their graduation. During 2026, Ravinia's renovation will expand and will also alter their schedule of events and programming. We have confirmed that we are unable to use the venue in 2026. We have started to vet venue options for that year and I will provide an update once we are further along in our planning. Ravinia has been very thoughtful and helpful partners with us and we are grateful for their willingness to host us in 2025. Also want to give an update on ISB's adoption of the ACT. As you may be aware, the Illinois State School Board, State Board of Education recently awarded a six-year contract to ACT as the provider of the state's required accountability assessment for graduation. This means that after a near- nearly a decade of taking the SAT, high school students in Illinois will shift, will shift back to taking the ACT in spring, in our spring 2025. At ISB's most recent assessment webinar, July 12th, the state shared that they will provide more information regarding the administration of the ACT once the contract is fully executed. We hope that this will be completed for their next webinar on July 26th. There are, however, a few things that we do know. Most importantly, we know that our families, students, and staff will need accurate, timely information to adapt. So I want to assure everyone that we will be communicating details and deadlines frequently as we navigate this change. I want to go over some highlights and then our proposed timeline to communicate with our stakeholders. So this shift to ACT as accountability assessment will take place in the spring of 2025. As a result of this shift, District 113 will begin working on transitioning to the ACT suite of assessments for students in grades nine through 10th to prepare, to prepare students for taking the ACT in the spring of their junior year. So all grade levels will be assessed, nine through, nine through eleven. Unlike the SAT, the ACT has an embedded.
Shayla, can I ask you to, uh, there, so all grades nine through eleven will be taking the ACT, is what you're saying?
Sorry, there's, similar to SAT with the suite of assessment.
Yep.
ACT also has their own suite.
They're going to do their.
So ninth and tenth graders will also be assessed.
But they will not be taking.
They're not taking the, they're not taking the ACT until their junior year.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Before someone panicking.
Unlike the SAT, the ACT has an embedded science component. So it, ISB has eliminated the science, the Illinois Science Assessment as an additional standalone test. That's a big shift for us. While students and teachers will gain time back from the elimination of the Illinois Science Assessment, we believe in District 113 that we should develop a plan to reallocate that newfound testing time in the spring to providing the PSAT, NMSQT, or our National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test during the school day to all juniors and making optional, making it optional for sophomores in the fall, beginning in 2025 and no charge to students and their families. So just to clarify, the PSAT, NMSQT is a part of SAT's offerings. We want to continue to offer that as an option for our students because it allows them to qualify for national merit scholarships. So we will continue to engage in outreach, um, see if there are additional people or students interested in taking that and will also provide that to our students. The NMSQT provides scholarship opportunities to students who perform well, opening the door to educational opportunities students may not even be aware of or that make their dreams more achievable by lightening the financial burden. To implement this opportunity for our students, we will need to plan for the academic support students may need, accommodate the testing date in the school schedule, and budget for the cost of the tests. That is why we want to start working on that now for 2025. For fall, 2024, we will offer the NMSQT free of charge to any junior or sophomore who wishes to take it. We have also compiled and will share free tutoring resources. More detailed information will be sent directly to sophomores and juniors and their parents and guardians in the coming days with additional information provided when students return to school. For students with testing accommodations authorized in a 504 or IEP, a 504 plan or an IEP, approval is required from College Board, the company that administers the SAT suite of assessments, to apply those accommodations for college board tests. The deadline to submit the accommodation request form is August 15th, 2024. More information will be shared directly by Jeff Rubin, the district's testing accommodations and homebound coordinator. So basically, we are working to make sure that all of our families have the information they need regarding accommodations their students, um, may need for these assessments and will work directly with them to ensure that everything's in place.
And then the separate accommodations for the ACTs that'll happen in the spring?
Yes. Want to refresh your pause before I move on? It's a lot of information, but we wanted to make sure that we're stating this here.
Right.
And then there's going to be a follow-up communication sent to all of our families, so they're, they have this in writing and know the steps that they take, need to take, and who to contact if they have additional questions.
Will the, will the whole district be taking those ACTs on the same day? Do we know? Will both of our high schools be taking it or will regions be taking them on the same day? So will all Lake County high schools be taking those ACTs on the same days? Do we know that yet?
We don't know. And I, um, other cabinet members can chime in who have been working more closely with us.
Yes, the state will release, they, they give us a window right now because it's going to be digital, just like the SAT was this past spring.
Yep.
Um, so once we have more information in terms of that window, right now it's just a window, so potentially we could schedule everyone in one day or we could decide to schedule separately. We just have to have a conversation about it.
And do we think, as in past practice, if I remember correctly from a long time ago, um, that those days of testing, our underclassmen will not be in the buildings because we will be using all of our rooms for accommodations, et cetera? Do we anticipate that that will be the same thing as we've done before with PSATs or whatever the other tests that we used to do? Anyone?
That our underclassmen will not be there?
If my memory serves correctly, when our upperclassmen take the test in the school, our underclassmen do not go to school those days because we want to utilize as many rooms as we can within our buildings to let those who need accommodations in different testing environments that our whole district is open to them. So I assume we are planning on, would you be thinking we'd be doing the same thing even though it's ACTs versus SATs? Those things would not change?
Possibly, um, but I also need to find out more about some of the shifts that have taken place since we've, um, since this is now done on a computer. Um, some districts have changed even the structure and location of the assessments. Um, and so I need to find out more about
Thank you.
that shift and then what our plan will be moving forward. But great question and we'll definitely follow up with that.
What I've heard you say is that you are going to communicate early and often.
Yes.
To parents and students.
Yes.
That you are acutely aware of the layering now of accommodation requests required, um, for our IEP and 504 students. Um, and you're making sure that any testing outside of ACT that enables rewarding of merit aid or, or not merit, but scholarship aid, um, will be available to our students.
Yes. Thank you.
Big ones. Thank you. Bye. Fantastic.
And now for our K9 pilot. As previously reported.
Fly the plane?
And communicated across our school communities, we launched a pilot of a K9 detection team during summer school at Deerfield High School the week of July 8th. The K9 team consisted of a certified handler who partnered with a certified specially-trained dog to work in the school environment. The dog was trained to detect the scent of firearms and explosives and discreetly notify the handler in the event of a suspicious odor. One of the outcomes during the pilot was for us to assess the feasibility of potentially adding this extra layer of enhanced protection to our security pro- protocols. This pilot was discussed and reviewed with the board during the most recent physical security review on May 14th. And running the pilot during summer school allowed us to observe and learn from this test while gathering feedback from the District 113 students and staff who were on campus. So during the week of July 8th, we had a fantastic experience implementing the K9 pilot. Our dog, Hunter, was warmly welcomed by both students and staff. A part of that process, as you know, we launched a survey and we also, um, asked for voluntary, uh, members or people or students to, um, join our focus groups. And so a full repl- a, a full report regarding the entire experience, the plan, feedback, and takeaways will be provided to the board during one of our August meetings. I just wanted to let you know that, that feedback, um, has been gathered and we're making sense of it to report it back to the school community.
Fantastic. We look forward to hearing the details.
I don't know if anyone else wants to share? Have anything else to add?
Sure. From an operational standpoint, I, I do, you know, um, not trying to give my report, uh, next month today, but it was a, it was a positive experience, um, from operationalizing, um, this process.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay. All right, and I believe you've got everything done?
Yes.
Um, and next is FOIAs.
So listed, um, the, the FOIA that was received and responded to since the last board meeting.
Um, there is no public comment, uh, anyone is signed up, so we will be moving on to uh, first reading of our policies. And Jaime is obviously not here, so he has entrusted me a little bit on this. Um, obviously as a policy committee this last spring, we did go through these policies, um, and I'm bringing them to the board for the first reading. Um, I do, if, are there any questions, uh, for the policies? I want up through, uh, five one hundred, uh, five, sorry, seven one sixty. I want to pause on seven one ninety. Um, are there any questions?
My only concern on seven one sixty is when reading it, um, what we stated accessorizing graduation attire, but we don't state everyday attire and I don't know whether that needs to be in there. So saying the district does not prohibit the right for students to wear accessor- or accessorize the student's graduation attire with items associated with the student's culture, ethnic, religious identity, et cetera. But it doesn't really say anything. It, we go through team uniforms and things like that, but it doesn't say anything about everyday in our bills. And that's my only concern is that if we put it there just with those two things, an athletic uniform and a graduation attire that we said, then it doesn't apply to their everyday attire. And that would be my only question on that one. I don't know if by omission, it means that we don't allow that. That's my only question.
I feel like it seems to be covered in the first statement.
Yeah.
Like that very first sentence seems to allow for students to wear whatever they like to. The exception of like what we stated, so I don't know if it's necessary to. Okay.
Okay.
No, that's why I asked you, just because I see that as being very global, but then we made those two very specific examples and that was my concern, that by making those did we then limit others?
And I would just add that the speci- specificity of the others, um, are because they have not historically been allowed or students have been denied the oppor- opportunities to demonstrate cultural pride at graduations. Um, and the other part about athletic and team uniforms is to ensure that we have an inclusive environment and that we're building that into our policies.
Following press.
Yes.
And then the other question then with that, um, and that to be a by no means, so don't someone start telling me I'm trying to censor, et cetera. Um, do they have to get, this says that it doesn't prohibit, et cetera, does it have to be approved or can someone just walk in without it being approved in there? That was my only other question on that.
So are you, you're talking about graduation?
Yeah.
Yes, there should be processes. Our buildings, we'll work with our buildings to make sure there are processes in place for an approval and that there are reminders, um, of that process because without those procedures in place, we may get a range of different things.
That's the implementation of the.
Yes. Yes.
Right.
And, and as long as we know, and I think that you, so far in your first two hours of our meetings, et cetera, have said the communication, communication, communication.
Yes.
So important, particularly with graduation, that we communicate ahead of the day of or the day before rehearsal, what will, would be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and then the only other, uh, one before we get to seven one ninety is just noting that two, two seventy is, um, new to our district, um, but we are recommending to adopt press. And if there's any questions about that one. Okay? Um, and so then speaking to seven one ninety, Dr. Holland?
So seven one ninety is listed for first reading today. Do want to acknowledge that between the first reading and the second reading, there will be a policy committee meeting to talk about seven one ninety in relationship to our acceptable use policy with technology as well as seven one eight zero, which is bullying, intimidation, and harassment. And it covers different layers of cyberbullying, et cetera. You will notice, um, that one of the changes in seven one nine zero speaks to the use of our artificial intelligence technology, um, which we want to, which is important that it's in there, but we also need to have a more comprehensive discussion, um, and really review the intersection with some of our other policies and that will take place at our next policy committee meeting. So you may see updates between the first reading and the second reading based on the larger, more comprehensive discussion that we have in our upcoming policy committee meeting.
And then our plan moving forward for seven one ninety and seven one eighty is that those are reviewed early.
Yes.
And this conversation would be cur- happening early in spring in preparation for the student handbook being updated for the subsequent year.
Exactly.
Any questions? Okay. Um, and then, excuse me, uh, you'll notice then on, uh, item H, there are three policies that are basically being, uh, updated in order to, uh, align with the new wording of policy two two six five. Okay. Great. Moving on to action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education accepts certificate of achievements for excellence in financial reporting issued by Government Finance Officers Association. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Woo, yeah. Um, I do want to take a moment and highlight what was shared in the June seventeenth, uh, Government Finance Officers Association, talk about a long title, um, of the United States press release. The, uh, GFOA has awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to Township High School District 113 for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2023. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So Ali, thank you to you and your team that are able to do this year over year. So I wanted to- Ali, how many years is it?
Oh. Two thousand and fifteen. We haven't gotten to twenty-three, ten yet.
Okay, there we go. Pretty extraordinary thing.
Lucky seven.
There you go. The selfie would be kind of fun. I can't be in the picture because Hubble doesn't know I'm here. Is there any other discussion? A roll call, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Mr. Heineman?
Aye.
Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Ms. Newman?
Aye. Motion carries. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing reduction in working hours, days of educational support personnel as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? A roll call, please.
Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Mr. Heineman?
Aye.
Ms. Newman?
Aye, motion carries.
Let's keep it closed.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve those closed session minutes that are to remain closed from December 12th, 2023 through May 28th, 2024 as presented. Is- Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And can you explain why we keep things closed?
Sure. I'd be happy to, Board Member Shapiro.
Thank you.
We will review the closed minutes to see if there is anything in regards to litigation, personnel, or students. And I'm sorry, I think there's one more.
Security.
Security, thank you, and security. And if the minutes contain those type of items, we need to keep them closed.
Thank you, President Newman.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to education. Did I skip another one?
No, you just, we didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. A roll call, please.
Mr. Heineman? Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Ms. Newman?
Aye, motion carries. I'm on D. Okay. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to educational support staff employee Ricardo Russell as presented. Is there a motion? So, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? A roll call, please.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Mr. Heineman?
Aye.
Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Ms. Newman?
Aye, motion carries. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to educational support staff employee Ricardo Diego as presented. Is there a motion?
No. Oh, thank you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? A roll call, please.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Mr. Heineman?
Aye.
Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Newman?
Aye, motion carries. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to educational support staff employee Jasmine Colon as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? A roll call, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Mr. Heineman?
Aye.
Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Ms. Newman?
Aye, motion carries. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution providing for the reduction in force of educational support staff Timothy Yee as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? A roll call, please.
Mr. Heineman?
Aye.
Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Ms. Newman?
Aye, motion carries. Next to the consent agenda, a board member may pull any item for separate consideration. Does any board member wish to pull an item off the consent agenda for separate consideration? It is recommended the consent agenda be approved as listed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Greg, you have the bills.
I did. So I did have the opportunity to review the check register for June and with the help of a random number generator, pulled three for consideration and review. I actually pulled a couple of interesting ones. So the first was a check that was made payable to the Chicago History Museum. This was for rental fees for Highland Park's prom. So that was kind of neat. Pulled one payable to the Cove School. This is for educational services provided outside of our buildings. And the third actually was to Gigi's Playhouse. This was a payment for, this is sort of near and dear to my heart, this father of a student who was very involved in school chess historically, for school chess last year. That was the recipient for school chess last year at Deerfield High School. So I met with Ali and Josh, went through the payment of these, their approval of the process, some of the internal controls surrounding not only this, but also some other things, which I'll spare everybody the details within the check register itself. And everything is clearly, you know, properly recorded, approved, as well as our internal controls.
Great, thank you. Is there any other discussion? A roll call, please.
Ms. Lupa?
Aye.
Mr. Neder?
Aye.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, please.
Director Elliot Schirmer?
Aye.
Mr. Heineman?
Aye.
Ms. Newman?
Aye, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. It is seven thirty-seven. We are adjourned.